Palermo.
Here.
Rowe. Bagley is absent. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Rowe.
Welcome to spring in Nebraska. Don't you love the longer and warmer days? The freshness of an April shower that brings new life? And then maybe a rogue snowstorm? For the Christian community, Easter is just around the corner, and for many, we find hope. Then tragedy strikes, and families find themselves in the midst of unthinkable trauma. There's no answer to the question, why? We dig deep into our faith, and our conversations become more spiritual in nature. And we should cherish those visits with family and friends. Hold your children and grandchildren a little tighter and a little longer this spring. Don't get me wrong, I love to talk about streetcars, fixing potholes, and even roundabouts. But I find those other conversations to be much, much more meaningful and much more compelling.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here this afternoon and look forward to hearing from you on our many items. Before we get started, we do have a few things to address, one of which I do want to thank Councilman Rowe for those remarks. And we do want to acknowledge the tragedy that struck Nashville yesterday. Our thoughts and prayers go out to that community, and I did speak to their community last night and this morning because we do have an Omaha connection to Nashville. As many here in the room know, Jennifer Rasmussen-Maladorf was a former deputy chief of staff to the mayor for Omaha, and she's now the chief of staff to Mayor Cooper in Nashville. So we've been in contact, and she was in charge of the family reunification site yesterday, which I know is very difficult for everyone. So our thoughts and prayers are with her and support for her work and for that community, too. Secondly, I want to acknowledge, we have a great group of students here with us today. The Nebraska Civic Leaders Program, in cooperation with UNO, is here, and I had the privilege of speaking with them today about city government. I want to acknowledge them. We have students from Bryan High School, South High School, Central High School, Burke High School, and North High School. Please stand and be acknowledged. Thanks for your interest in city government. And then lastly, before we get started, we do have a presentation. We have a proclamation to honor our retiring fire chief, Dan Olson. Chief, I'll have you come to the podium. I'm going to read this into the record, and then we'll take any remarks council members may have, and give you an opportunity to speak as well. So the proclamation from the city council reads like this. Whereas Omaha Fire Chief Dan Olson retired on March 24, 2023, after 30 years of service to the Omaha Fire Department, having joined as a firefighter in 1993, held command positions beginning in 2007, including captain, battalion chief, assistant chief, and interim chief, and was appointed fire chief in 2016. And whereas Chief Olson supervised the design and construction of Omaha's first new fire station in 22 years, Station 31, which opened at 34th and L in July of 2022, and has presided over plans to build the 25th fire station in northwest Omaha and a joint Omaha Fire, Omaha Police Public Safety Headquarters. And whereas Chief Olson managed the department's budget, worked to reinstate to service numerous medic units and additional apparatus, led the development and implementation of a fleet replacement plan, which created a timeline to replace and standardize all frontline fire apparatus over the next eight years. He supervised firefighter training programs and participated in labor negotiations. And whereas Chief Olson prioritized health and wellness programs for firefighters, including protocols to protect firefighters and patients during the pandemic, a second set of turnout gear for firefighters to reduce exposure to carcinogens, and prioritized the safety of Omaha's citizens and firefighters by setting and achieving high standards and goals for the department. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Omaha, thank Chief Olson for his many years of public service to the citizens of Omaha, congratulate him on his retirement, and hereby declare March 24, 2023, as Chief Dan Olson Day in the city of Omaha. Congratulations. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief Olson, you'll always be chief. I mean, you know how this works, right? Retired or not.
Thank you.
I've known you for a long time, long before I sat in this chair. And you, without a doubt, as the chief of the fire department, and even before that, have earned the respect for the job you had. And there's a reason why I didn't prepare this right. We don't prepare this kind of stuff. And I know that because, chairing the Public Safety Committee, we would have the privilege of giving updates about your firefighters. And what's important for people to know is that the updates that we got from Chief Olson were always about the safety of his firefighters, whether it was turnout gear, extracting machines, new equipment, new equipment that's desperately needed, and always different ways to find safety for his firefighters. That was always the most important thing. And this I do know. We've worked on getting a fire station in south Omaha that, I think, you only waited for that fire station before you retired, right? I mean, you were definitely going to see that through.
Right.
I want to stake dinner on that bet as well, betting firefighters that they would never see it, and they did. And that truly came from you. So when we talk about public safety, large part of the budget, and we talk about the service that we provide to the citizens of Omaha, there is no doubt it is people just like you that make this possible. There's so much behind the scenes that folks just don't know, but I know, and I can tell them, from me, thank you.
Thank you.
So appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo on Councilmember Palermo's sentiments regarding your effectiveness as the chief of the fire department. My brief time that I've been here on city council, I've had the opportunity to have meetings with you during safety committee meetings. And you demonstrated your passion for your crew. Every time you came to the meeting, you presented things that would help them be better prepared and safe when they're out, taking care of their duties. I felt that you were very humble in your delivery of what your needs were. And I agree with Councilmember Palermo. You are very talented and very effective in your role, and wish you the very best in your retirement. And I had a great pleasure in working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Ms. Melton, I think your lights on?
Thank you. Chief, it's just been a pleasure serving the citizens of Omaha with you, and I say that because that's how you've thought of yourself all the way to the job as chief, that you've served this community, and you've served not just the firefighters in our department, but it's your connection with the public, and that public safety is number one. And that's what you've always prioritized. And I look at all of the achievements that you've made as chief, all the way down to the new fire station in south Omaha, but thank you for making the next one in northwest Omaha, which is where we really need it. But the reason that is, is because you're always looking at the plan. You're looking at not just the needs of the firefighters, the paramedics, the first responders, but the needs of the community. And so you put both of them up there and say, you know what? I don't have to pick one over the other. I'm going to do both, because that's what our community needs. And then you don't just say, I'm going to do both, and who cares what it costs? You also look at, how can I do what I need to do? Not raise taxes and find other funding, going after grants, and really putting, which is a lot of time and effort, into finding out, how do I do all this, still manage the budget for the taxpayer, but keep everybody safe? You really have an amazing ability to be able to accomplish all of that. And I always liked listening to you because you always kind of answered my questions before I could even ask them, because you thought about everything, and you justified everything that you asked for with, and this is how we can do it, and this is why it makes sense. And I have to say, I'm really going to miss working with you because you have just been an amazing representative, an amazing serviceman to our community and to this council. And I have to tell you that I'm very pleased that I was able to work with you because I think you've taught me a lot that I can use moving forward, and I'll always remember how you approach everything. And I also, I have to just add in there, I also deeply love your wife. She's a wonderful person, and I would like to thank you for allowing him to serve the citizens of Omaha all of these years. So now maybe we can give him back to you for, you can have him full-time now. But thank you for that because being chief, just being a firefighter, being a first responder, takes quite a bit of dedication from your family because you're gone a lot. So thank you for your dedication to us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, I believe you're in the queue.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to simply say thank you. You've served us well. You clearly have the gift of leadership, and I know that going forward, you'll find another way to be of service and a servant, and that's what you do, that's who you are. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. Dan, I can call you Dan now, right?
Yes.
The words on the piece of paper that was just read can't begin to describe the dedication and your accomplishments to not only the citizens of Omaha, but all the men and women of fire. So I wanted to thank you for that, and know that the words are quite expressive and cover a lot of your accomplishments, but again, I don't think it begins to cover the years of service and dedication that you've given to the citizens of Omaha and the men and women of fire. You took the department and leave it in a better position than you found it, and you've set it up well for the next leader. And I think that's something that the citizens of Omaha can be very thankful of and know that the public safety and the safety of all our citizens as it relates to firefighting services are in a better place, and we're thankful for your service in accomplishing that. I do also want to take this time, so it's, March 24 was officially your last day.
Correct.
I'm not going to ask Natalie if she already wants us to take you back, even though it's been three or four short days, but as Councilmember Melton stated, too, the dedication and sacrifice is not only borne by you, but it's borne by your family. And Natalie, who has done some work for the city as well, knows that all too well. So to you and your family, on behalf of the city of Omaha, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I really appreciate it. I'm very humbled and honored to be here today to go out on a note like this is beyond my wildest dream. You know, I usually come prepared with a binder this thick, and today I'm just going to wing it, so please bear with me. But I really do appreciate you. All of the things that you mentioned in terms of my accomplishments as a fire chief, they're not my accomplishments, they're our accomplishments. I have to give the credit to the council, obviously Mayor Stothard and her support team, my colleague cabinet team members in the background there, my team, my fire management team, and all of the people that have contributed to the successes of the fire department in allowing us to move into that progressive lane and do all of the wonderful things that we've accomplished in our tenures together. So with that, I want to thank you. We couldn't have done it without you, to have a council that was supportive, and a mayor's office that was supportive, and other department directors that were supportive. We all understood that we had to respect the priorities of each other's departments, and sometimes had to be patient while we focused on those priorities. But we always knew that we had the support of the council, the mayor's office, and each other, and that's how we have become such a successful team together. So with that, I want to thank you once again. I would like to thank my wife. She's been with me the entire time. I've been on the fire department with the exception of six months, extremely supportive, and let me go as far as I wanted to go in terms of achieving the goals that I set for myself and the goals that I later set as a fire chief for the fire department. There's a lot of stress along the way, but we couldn't have done it without you, and I want you to know that I appreciate that deeply. My prayer for the future is that you'll continue to support the fire management team in the fire department so that we can continue to raise the bar of public safety in our city. It's a wonderful place to live. We've done a great job in that arena, and we need to continue to do that. I am available to you if you need anything. With that, I'm going to say thank you once again, and it's truly been my honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for FIG located at 345 Riverfront Drive.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, appearing here on this license application for the FIG. This is, this was a big facility, as you know, and we're asking to license the whole facility as opposed to coming back for SDLs all the time. Primarily, this license is for a cafe there, but we are asking to license the whole facility. And again, so just we don't have to come back for SDLs. We think it'll be a facility will be used a lot for charitable events, that type of thing, fundraising events. So we're here for any other questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Other proponents? See none, any, oh, go ahead.
Louis Jimenez. Louis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm excited about this business because it is going to be at the Luminaryum, and they're going to open up in April, so the city council can support them by approving this liquor license application. And that area is, over at the riverfront, is going to be an exciting place where people can go and spend their time. There's going to be more than drinking going on there, so you don't have to worry about that. Support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents?
Mr. President, before we get started, this is the medical marijuana you told me about.
This is the liquor license for the Luminaryum.
He keeps telling me medical marijuana.
Okay. Any opponents to number six? See none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve. With a waiver.
Waiver of Park Rule 7?
Oh, I'm sorry. With a waiver of Park Rule number seven.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for the Bubbly Tart located at 3020 Levenworth Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Schroder. I own the Bubbly Tart at 3020 Levenworth Street, Suite 1. I don't know how this works, so.
Do you answer questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Well, you're here to answer questions that we have, then, right?
Yes, yes. I'm here, or whatever.
You're doing fine. Any other proponents here today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for Upstream Brewing Company located at 514 South 11th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Chad Gumbert, General Manager at Upstream Brewing Company, 514 South 11th Street. I'm here to apply for the Class K addition to our license to do some off-site events at different venues throughout the city. Upstream Brewing Company's been around a long time, and we've been doing business for a long time. We just want to reach out a little bit and do more in the community with that.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion and second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nine, to consider a liquor license addition application for Mouth of the South Lakeside to add an indoor area to their location at 16909 Lakeside Hills Plaza, Suite 118.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Ryan Ernst, 10727 Canyon Road. We're just expanding into the bay next to us. Just here to get the liquor license for that.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion and second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 10, to consider a liquor license addition application for Rhythm's Lounge and Bistro to add an indoor area to their location at 10841 Q Street, Suites 114 through 118 and 122 through 124. Is communication in opposition?
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Name is Darren Bell. I'm here to request permission from you guys for an addition, for additional seating here that I have at my location. Been there for 10 years, trying to satisfy some of my customers with the space that we currently have, and what I'm, you know, just trying to do better moving forward. So I'm just moving over to a space next to what I had a storage room. So that's why I need approval.
Okay. And your address for the record, too?
10841 Q Street, Omaha, Nebraska. This is 68137.
All right. Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, thanks for coming down to run. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
We were able to have a conversation prior about this license, and it's basically an addition to an existing business, and you've been successful at that location on 108th and Q. It's a very busy area. The prior liquor license had stipulations attached, and I'd like to just go through those, just so that you're clear and I'm clear as to what those were. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this license, but with these stipulations attached.
Correct. Yes, sir.
The first condition is to secure Dr. Curry's parking lot. He's a dentist that's adjacent to your business.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure that that traffic doesn't spill over into his lot. He's got probably the most active dentist practice in the city, and he works all hours of the day and night. And so it's important for him to have access to his own parking lot.
Correct. I have a relationship, I have a relationship with him for 10 years, so.
Okay. I want to make sure that you're patrolling the parking with off-duty officers on the nights that you have events.
Yes.
Number three, be sure to clean up any trash and litter in the surrounding area. Again, you're in tight, close proximity to other businesses, and I'm just wanting to make sure that you're a good neighbor.
Yes.
And then finally, I'd ask that you maintain barriers, a barrier between Dr. Curry's parking, or his office and your parking in the back of your building. And I think, I don't think that's a, it's not a wooden barrier or anything, it's just a median, just to make sure that median stays in place. And we don't have traffic flowing over.
Correct.
Into his property.
Yes. I think, like you mentioned before, all those stipulation was in place before I took over. You know, we've been there for 10 years, but nothing changes. Everything is still the same.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, if you're agreeable to all those things, I'll make a motion to approve this license with those stipulations attached.
Motion and second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 11, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Rowan Oak Business Park Replat 4, located southwest of 120th and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Sit up all the way there? Okay, there we go.
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself, Patrick Mahol with Green Hall Investments is in the audience as well to ask any questions you may have. We are currently looking at the corner on the north or southwest corner of 120th and Fort. As you can see, the majority of this corner, it's roughly 28 acres, is currently zone mixed use and part of an existing mixed-use agreement. We are replating to add 3.9 acres, the hatched area that is in the DR. We are looking to add that to the mixed-use agreement, and the corner is zone, currently zone GC, had boondockers in it before. We are looking to zone that and replat it to MU as well, and add it to the mixed-use agreement. This is our proposed mixed-use plan. Current plan shows a mixed-use of fast food, hotel, office retail, and then restaurant and entertainment areas as well. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 11? See none, any opponents? It's got to be about 120th and Fort Streets, right? Donny?
I used to live a long time ago, but I moved out in the area. So I want to make a point here. Donny Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Ohio Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I, it said Rowan Oaks, that's a development. Just in case, Mr. Fredson, if we can get an agreement, and the UNICAM will finally pass medical marijuana, we just set aside some money and some land for us.
You can't talk about medical marijuana.
Okay, well, I pass that. In the future, Rowan Oaks is a good development, and I see Mr. Moha Nursery doing a wonderful job, but southwest of that, northwest of that is more land. Would you save that land available, make it available for African-Americans? But southwest of that, northwest of that is more land. Would you save that land available, make it available for African-Americans to grow something?
Any other opposition to number eleven? Seeing none public carers closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Motion to approve this, but I also want to just recognize all the work that the Moholes have done. And Patrick, I see you, I see you back there. The amount of time and effort that you've put into this project far exceeds what's kind of been shared today. So I want to thank you for everything you've done and and your family for their willingness to develop this land. If you remember, a couple of years ago, this council supported expanding the turnback tax for, from just indoor sports complexes to outdoor sports complexes. This development is exactly what, what, why. In fact, Senator Lindstrom, this was his district, we share this area. But this project was one of the goals that he had in mind when, when he got that turnback tax passed. So we have a great opportunity with this development to then expand and develop Tranquility Park. And I think, so this, it's, what we're doing today is more than, than this, which is incredible for that area. But also for the, what's across on the other side of the street that would benefit everyone and the public and our public park and facility over there at Tranquility. So I just wanted to give a, a big thank you and shout out. If nobody else has their lights on, I want a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Pass six to zero. Items twelve through fourteen can be considered together for the Rose at Coventry replat one, located southwest of two hundred and seventh and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twelve in ordinance to approve a major amendment to the PUD overlay district. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Mr. President, Councilmember, Jason Thiel and E and A Consulting Group, ten nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, Suite one hundred, here on behalf of the developers for final plat. Quickly, this is a replat of this project. This was before you, probably a year and a half ago. There was a daycare proposed here. We had some outlots and they added some additional units here. The daycare was not a viable option after COVID and they've had a lot, quite a bit of success out here selling these units. Um, and so they've added. There was one hundred and seventy-eight townhomes. They've now added thirty-six for a total of two hundred and fourteen. So it's almost a little over eleven units an acre at this location. Uh, had ZBA approval for the waivers needed back in August of 2022. We had planning board approval as well that same month. Under a conditional approval, unanimous decision and no opposition. Uh, after your approval here today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public carers closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed, six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public carers on agenda items fifteen through twenty-three were held on March fourteenth. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
On note, we have a withdrawal request from the applicant of number forty-two, which is the planning department in this case. So that is considered withdrawn. At this point, we'll take public carers on agenda items number twenty-four through forty-one and forty-three through fifty-two. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I will note, we do have the liquor license applicants by Zoom for number twenty-four and twenty-five if council members have questions.
Luis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I am supporting item thirty-three, which is a bit awarded to Hawkins Construction Company for the improvements to the north downtown riverfront pedestrian connector bridge in the amount of six million dollars. That is going to be a great project for walkability and I hope that's a theme for 2023 and beyond that the city is looking at multimodal transportation. Particularly pedestrian and, and people who bike. Uh, the bridge is going to go in the river, by the Missouri River. But we, we need pedestrian passages in the inner city. And I have some ideas, if you guys are interested in other projects, that you might relay to the department heads who would be able to find some money to finance more bridges. These pedestrian bridges are expensive, so six million dollars is about right. And if you guys build other ones, you'd probably be looking at five million for bridges in, within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue. Omaha, six eight one three two. Have a little hard time following you. You're awful fast at the mic, Mr. Festerson. Uh, and call me, meetings closed, the hearing closed. Number forty, is that permitted at this time?
Yes.
You're rattling off so many numbers and picking things out, it's hard to follow you.
Printed right there on the.
Should repeat it. But on number forty, I do live in that area. I've been trying to read that and study it. I just want to also make a couple of points that if you, please don't call me out or deron, but we have students here today. This agenda would be awful hard for them to follow and understand.
I think they're.
For a lot of reasons, okay? It needs to be more clear. I got to read you through the documents on this. It's a real hard to understand what we're doing in the North Saddle Creek uh, in that area. But I happen to live close to Fiftieth Street and and the Northwest Saddle Creek interject, intersection. What I'm most upset about, and please correct me, was the correct interpretation of the U.S. Constitution and the rules and regulations. But to my knowledge, there are no such special classes uh, been inserted to the Constitution. Let me read something out of one of the pages.
Number forty is a design contract for.
This is from the contractor on this, this item, and this is why I'm against it, okay?
Okay, keep it focused.
Let me finish, sir. Has to do with city contracts. These clauses may be unconstitutional and void because they are. General conditions. Item number ten, your pages are different when you try to print them out, but nondiscrimination clause, federal or state laws, local ordinances, et cetera. Because of race, color, creed, religion, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, or disability. And some other things. To my knowledge, there have been no special classes added to the Constitution.
That is a standard clause in all city contracts.
So if this contract is to be valid, you maybe need to take some of those things out if they're not legal.
That's incorrect.
Now, a U.S. Code might be considered a law, but it's not in the Constitution. It's referred to again under the contract provisions. EEO and all this other stuff, you verify citizenship. Uh, item number R on what is supposed to be page eight, equal employment opportunity clause. I'm quite familiar with that over the last forty years or more. Once again, we could say because the contractor shall not discriminate, et cetera, because of race, color, creed, religion, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, national origin, age, or disability. Some of those things have been added in there, maybe unconstitutionally.
That's incorrect. That was adopted over 10 years ago.
If they are totally legal under the Constitution, uh, please clarify with the exact place in the Constitution that that is legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents to these items or testifiers on these items?
Good afternoon, councilmen for the city, greatest city of Omaha. Uh, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I think these programs that they have presented to us are good, but one of the concern is that some of the problems downtown that you folks might want to start addressing, like the parking garage.
Item are you addressing there, Donny?
All of them. Every last one. For instance, all these young folks here from the high school. I lived in hundred ninetieth and Center, hundred sixtieth and Pacific, worked with Millie North, Millie West, uh, Burke, Benson. So what I'm saying is that we need some more input in North Omaha though. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, I want to close public hearing. I do want to mention just a couple, um, that I think are important and notable. I mean, I think they're all important, but in my opinion, number thirty-three is important. Um, I agree with Luis's testimony. I was down at the CHI Health Center pretty much all weekend for a large volleyball tournament and dance competitions down there, lots of folks visiting Omaha. And this Baby Bob project, as described in number thirty-three, is a bridge connector from CHI Health Center to the pedestrian bridge across the river. And would be a very important and welcome, I think, pedestrian amenity downtown that we don't currently have and would substantially increase connectivity for, for visitors that are exploring our brand new riverfront and soon to, soon to be opened luminary. I will address number forty a little bit. Um, I think this is an important project and especially for my district. I thank Christie Evans and the Public Works Department for moving this contract forward. Uh, this would allow for a public process to redesign the neighborhood business district in the Saddle Creek area, essentially northwest radial all the way to Fiftieth Street and to what's called the Peanut and Metcalf Park. Another great example of our work in neighborhood business districts and with business improvement districts that would design this new program of work and public, and public investment in the area this year with substantial public input by the end of the year. Allow us then to proceed to construction and raise money for construction in 2024. So I'm pleased that's moving forward today as well. And the last item I would note that I just think is of, of interest and of note is number fifty-two. Um, this is a reappointment of a, of a current member of the Metro Board, which, um, as folks know, governs our public transit in the city, uh, something we think is very important to having a a growing city in the future. But what's particularly notable about this reappointment is it's probably our last appointment to this board. Um, I want to make sure folks know that the Metro Board has voted to become what's called a regional metropolitan transit authority. So in the future, these members will be elected and have to run for office in 2024. So this may very well be our last appointment to this, to this body. Okay, having said those things, there's no further lights. Is there a motion? Motion in a second. Roll call. Or, yes, roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
And I believe we do have to take a vote on withdrawing number forty-two. I would take a motion on that. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item fifty-three in ordinance to men, sections fifty-five dash six five one through fifty-five dash six six three of the Omaha municipal code related to floodplain regulations. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number fifty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Eric England, City of Omaha Planning Department. Thank you, President, and members of the council. This has been a long time coming. Um, this would be an amendment to chapter fifty-five, which is the zoning code specifically pertaining to floodplain regulations. So before I start on just a brief few comments, I want to thank Director Fanslaw, current planning manager Mike Carter, um, and planning department, the city's floodplain administrator, Robert LaRocco, as well as our partners at both the local, so the NRD, the state level, DNR, and then FEMA as well. This has been a lengthy process, probably dating back, um, you know, twelve to fifteen months. And really, that's because there's been a lot of back and forth with our partners to make sure that the proposed code changes are in full compliance with, with the state standards as well as federal standards. And that's important to make sure that we remain in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, which of course, these amendments will ensure that we do. There is a I'll keep that there. One major change that is included with this amendment, and that is basically deleting the cumulative substantial improvement provision that currently exists in the code. What this does is currently we track improvements or damages to properties that are in a floodplain. So any new building permit for renovation or new work, and I have a map and exhibit just to show you a few examples here in a, in a moment, but we would track those cumulatively and there may be a small portion of the building that's within the floodplain. But once those, the market value exceeds fifty percent, you know, for that building, the entire building would need to come in compliance with floodplain regulations. Sometimes that requires elevation, one foot above, foot, flood, flood base elevation. Excuse me, tongue tied there. Or there's other requirements. So these are often properties that do not usually have flood damages. Um, so this has been a tedious process for both owners of buildings as well as tenants that are seeking just to improve their building. The change with eliminating that cumulative tracking would have a result, and I have three examples here. All new structures that are in the floodplain would continue to require compliance with the floodplain. So whether that's elevation or other requirements. The incidence of major damages or improvements, so once again, this would be exceeding fifty percent to existing structures would still need to be in full compliance with the flood code. So those are two provisions that are in place today that will remain. The third item and really the big change is incidence of minor damages or improvements to a structure, um, which would be less than fifty percent of that market value, would no longer be cumulatively tracked and as such would not trigger the compliance with the, the full floodplain regulations. You know, we believe property owners should be able to, you know, make renovations, modernize their buildings. Um, this can apply to both residential and commercial buildings. There are some additional minor changes in the code. Um, much of these, once we brought this proposed amendment to eliminate the cumulative tracking, um, basically it opened up the opportunity for the state and state Nebraska and FEMA to, um, you know, implement newer codes that have been adopted at their level. So there are some, some different wording and modifications to the code that is largely a result of that. So I just have one, um, one site here I picked as an example. I know there's a lot of blue lines going on here. Zoom in a little bit. So I just chose, um, an office commercial area that has a lot of floodplains, so Seventy-eighth and Dodge. Of course, you have the little Papillion Creek um, adjacent. You have former west, or former crossroads site a little bit to the east. Um, you have all of these properties that are in the FF, which is flood, um, flood fringe basically, which is the floodplain. But if you look on the west side of Seventy-eighth Street, you have a small portion of this building that would be in the floodplain. You have a portion of a building here. You have another portion of a building here. So as it currently stands with that cumulative tracking, any improvements, for example, for this multi-tenant commercial building would require us to track the value and the cost of improvements over the course of a lifetime. You know, the point is, once those get to a certain threshold, you're bringing buildings into full compliance. When in actuality, that is very onerous and t, and difficult when you look at, you know, that building as an example, you can, it can basically lead to, um, you know, owners or tenants choosing not to do those renovations, perhaps not seeking the proper building permits and just doing it under the radar. So, um, I guess I will leave it at that. And if you have any questions. renovations, perhaps not seeking the proper building permits and just doing it under the radar. So I guess I will leave it at that, and if you have any questions, but we ask for your support and approval of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Eric, I might have just one question, follow-up question for you. So I, I'm supportive of what you're doing here and understand that explanation, so thanks for reviewing that. We've had some discussions about ensuing FEMA maps that are suggested but not finalized yet, and they're still an entire process they must go through that property owners can participate in and/or, I guess, appeal or make their cases in case they don't agree with those new floodplain maps. How would this interact with that process?
Well, this is a, a separate matter. When the new FEMA maps are officially adopt, approved and adopted by FEMA, the City of Omaha, we will have to amend this exact floodcode ordinance as well to reflect the new date. Not to get into too many of the details, but on page two of the ordinance attached in your documents, we do have a specific section that references previously approved FEMA maps, so we will have to update at a minimum this section here as well. But really, it's a separate matter. The new flood maps are, you know, aren't impacted by these new flood, flood changes or code changes.
So if those become officially adopted by FEMA and then by the council, we then adopt that into this code and it would be subject to these regulations, but that's not currently the case?
That's correct.
Right.
Yep.
Thanks. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Eric, could you also, I think it bears repeating, and I know we discussed it a little bit at pre-council today too, but one of the reasons why we're doing this is for participation in the flood insurance program.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think dating back to about 1970, Omaha has been a part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And what that means, you have to be in good standing, so there's thousands of cities and towns and villages across the country that are part of that program. And, you know, probably my, some of my associates in Public Works and other divisions of the city can speak to this maybe better than I can, but if you have, you know, damages from a major event, whether that's flooding or tornadoes, being within that National Flood Insurance Program allows for that federal funding for emergency assistance. So obviously, we don't want to jeopardize that. All these proposed amendments have been conditionally approved by both state and FEMA, so, you know, we buttoned up, made sure, we went back and forth to make sure there's no surprises for, you know, hopefully when the council approves this, we send it back to them, you know, to make sure we're in good standing.
I think additionally too, it gives a discount on the premiums that are paid.
Yeah, so that's a related, but separate matter, so that's the community rating service. So based on your regulations, policies, requirements that the city can have, you can get a certain rating level with the community rating service, so CRS. The City of Omaha is currently at a seven rating, which provides a 15% discount to thousands of property owners that are within the floodplain within the City of Omaha. So this effort does not jeopardize that. The section that we are actually eliminating with cumulative, we are not currently earning any points. In fact, some of the new language, although it is a little more lax as what maybe the highest standards would look at, we believe will actually pick up some points because the wording is, is more in line with their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 54, in ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, to add the employment classification entitled Greenhouse Foreman Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 54 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Claire Anderson Hubbard, HRAS and Compensation Manager in Human Resources Department.
Deb Sander, Human Resources Director. Here to answer any questions.
Chelsea Ship, Compensation Analyst, HR Department. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. See no lights, next item.
Item 55, in ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code, to change the salary for the city maintenance foreman to Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Claire Anderson Hubbard, HRAS Manager, City HR.
Deb Sander, Human Resources Director, City HR.
Chelsea Ship, Compensation Analyst, City HR.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Sander, I do have a question, sort of a follow-up from pre-council. Appreciate the information you sent me about the budgeted amount of city maintenance foreman to positions, how many we have filled and how many we have empty. It is different from pre-council discussion. I want to be clear that I think every city employee deserves more money. So when I ask these questions, it isn't because I don't believe in our city employees, regardless of management or whatever department they're in, but when we have a city maintenance foreman one, that their duties have been found not to change, and a city more, city maintenance foreman three, in which their duties haven't changed and we haven't had reason for reclassification, but then we look at city maintenance foreman two, and we do, and it's because of extra duties assigned. So it makes me think, but like, who was doing the duties assigned before? Was it the one or was it the three? Or maybe there's extra duties assigned. But the other part of this too, is when we talk about positions with the classification change in pay, it's the problem I have with public service agreements, our professional service agreements that we have, excuse me, with outside entities that truly are taking away from either our bargaining units or city employees. Because if we're determining based on whatever study you did that our city employees deserve more money, then I would think that it would calculate the opposite on professional service agreements, that we wouldn't need to rely on outside sources for city work. At least that's the way I look at it. So I wanted to make that clear. This isn't about thinking a city employee doesn't deserve more, it's about the fact that if we're going to sit up here and vote on professional service agreements for extra duties assigned for employees, then, then we need to think about that as we vote for these employees to get more money. So could you, this is the why, could you briefly describe to me what part of this classification determined, like, give me some examples of the job assignments that changed and why they deserve more money?
The scope of the city maintenance foreman to position, when we did the job studies and had job analysis from all of the incumbents, it showed that there is a number of duties that were reassigned to them over time. So especially, specifically in the parks department, there used to be a number of city maintenance foreman threes, and that was reduced over time to one CMF three. And so those duties were reassigned to city maintenance foreman twos, and then additional duties were, in the last five years specifically, added to their plate. So some of the things, you know, maintaining and complying accurate records, conducting inspections, inspecting work performed by utility companies and other contractors, reviewing and verifying and closing work orders to make sure that any work order that was done was, you know, done in compliance, maintaining a number of accurate records, inventory and coordinating acquisitions of supplies and equipment. So a number of these duties were added based upon what the individuals were doing currently today, based on their job studies. And so with the expansion of duties and the revising of the class spec, you've also noticed that in the class spec, there's different sections for, you know, streets and parks and things like that. Anything that was duplicative in those particular sections, we brought to the main section of the class specification, and then left only those that are specific to the individual divisions on the class spec. So because we've done such heavy revisions to this particular position, we looked to Silverstone Hub for information, as well as our comparable cities, and we landed on the new pay scale, which if you look at the city maintenance foreman ones, twos, and threes, it kind of puts it right in the middle of the ones and the threes. So that's kind of equidistant out, and that wasn't intentional, it's based solely on the data that we were provided by our cities and the Hub-Silverstone data.
Okay, thank you for that. Some of the essential functions of the city maintenance foreman two, one would be to oversee snow removal operations. If you get into specifics and you go to street maintenance, it would be, and I think you mentioned this in one of your job description changes, inspect work performed by utility companies and private contractors to ensure compliance with city specifications. But again, we have professional service agreements in place in which we hire outside people to do that, and that's why I question this. You did send me a chart of the positions because I had asked in pre-council, because some of this too is, we have jobs within the city, one being the work that you and your department did on EO1s, twos, threes, MR2s, which you did a fabulous job. We shored up the holes we had within the city, within that department, which was, which was great. I really didn't think that would ever happen, but somehow you did make it happen. And so when we look at job classifications, when we do have, and you find this in management more, from what I see, is usually they're 100% staffed. But I had asked how many foreman two we had, and it, whatever you said is different from what you sent me. You have 18 budgeted.
That's correct. I was, was, I didn't have the accurate.
No, 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 no. You were closer than I would have been for a guess. But there's only 10 filled. And my question is, are there only 10 filled because we haven't posted for the city maintenance foreman two? Are, are there only 10 filled because we can't find eight more?
We did have a posting for parks, and they have a vaca, vacancy that they're filling, and then we just recently posted for the three vacancies that are in the sewer maintenance division. That posting just closed yesterday. We have a number of applicants, and they will be referred so that the sewer department can make their selections. So we're in the process of getting those filled.
Okay. Hopefully some of them pan out, and then we could definitely clear up that eight negative that we have, because it would be great, because all these departments certainly deserve to have this position there, because when we talk about your parks being mowed or potholes being filled, this is that management position that would be overseeing that. I did not know we were eight short, but I'm also not on the Public Works Committee. I was just kidding, Bob. I am on the Public Works Committee. So when I look at the departments, and I know you don't have this, but I don't see, I see planning, parks, and I see some four different Public Works, but I don't see street maintenance. I see street capital, I see traffic, I see sewer, and I see environmental control.
Yeah, the street capital and construction, that's, they've combined the capital construction and street maintenance together. That's both of those.
So we only have two foreman two within the street department, within Public Works? Because I thought we had five district, district yards.
And those are filled by city maintenance foreman threes, or at the district yards. So we have five city maintenance foreman threes.
Okay.
And five districts.
Okay. But only two foreman two throughout all five Public Works district yards?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, again, hope for some more magic on this, because these are spots that are very, very important. And again, it's not that I don't feel city employees deserve more, because everyone does. It's just the fact that we do have these agreements in front of us that, to me, look like we're trying to help other people out instead of city employees, so thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Item 56, in ordinance to approve the contract with Minnesota Life Insurance Company to provide life insurance coverage to City of Omaha employees.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please.
Kristen Cavill, City Benefits Manager, here to answer any questions you have.
Deb Sander, Human Resources Director, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 56? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items 57 through 75, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:04.